The following segment is sponsored by Willamette University.
Welcome to this exclusive K2 Your Voice, Your Vote digital forum. With the biggest change in the history of Portland city government coming in January, the old city council of four commissioners and one mayor will be long gone. In its place, 12 new Portland city councilors. Voters will pick three councilors from four new districts. Dozens have applied for the jobs. Today, we hear from Portland city council candidates from District Two, which is located on the city's north and northeast side. Residents tell us affordability is a big issue there.
Housing prices has gone up so far that your average citizen that was born and raised here can hardly afford to live here.
And so is homelessness.
It's very disheartening to see these people all over. No place to go, no place to rest, to take a good shower every day.
District Two candidates will answer questions on these important issues and more. Your vote on the new city council will have a huge impact on Portland's future. This live digital forum with District Two candidates starts right now. From K2 and Willamette University, this is Your Voice, Your Vote, Portland City Council Forum with Steve Dunn. And welcome to K2's Portland City Council Candidate Forum for District Two, everybody. We have eight candidates in studio today. You'll hear their plans to address Portland's challenges in just a moment. But first of all, a message from the program sponsor, Willamette University.
I'm Steve Thorsett, president of Willamette University. We are proud to support K2's Your Voice, Your Vote election coverage. For nearly two centuries, Willamette's mission has been to educate leaders for civic society. We believe a healthy democracy depends on thoughtful and ethical leaders in government, and especially on an informed electorate. We're grateful for the discussions and debates K2 brings to our community. Thanks for watching.
And thank you, Willamette University. Due to time, we could only invite a limited number of candidates. From District Two, the following candidates met the criteria, which include filing to run for office with the city, filing a candidate committee with the Secretary of State's office, filing contribution and expenditure reports with the Secretary of State's office, receiving certification to participate in Portland's small donor elections, and being among the candidates with the highest number of individual small donor contributions. We want to mention that starting next week on ketu.com, you can watch interviews of all the District Two candidates who took the time to do a Know Your Candidates interview with us. And right now, I'd like to introduce you to the candidates participating in this forum today in alphabetical order. Marnie Glickman is here, Mariah Hudson, Samir Canal, Tiffany Penson, Dan Ryan, Jonathan Tessini, Nat West, and Nabeel Zaglual. I'd like to thank you all for being here today. I want to ask you all one question to start off with. Just give me a one or two-word answer on this one before we get going here. Number one issue you will address if you were elected. Number one issue you will address. We picked names out of a hat, and Nabeel, we begin with you, sir. Go ahead.
It would be economic growth and infrastructure.
Marnie?
Public safety.
Mariah?
Public safety also.
Samir?
Safety, trust.
Tiffany?
Public safety.
Dan Ryan?
Public safety and improved services.
Jonathan Tessini?
Wages for working people.
Nat West?
Safe streets.
All right, well, thank you all for that. We just heard from the candidates, sir. Now, we'd like to hear from you. On Monday, we posted this question on ketu.com. What do you think is the biggest issue Portland city council should focus on? Here are the responses, and you folks in the studio can see the screen right here. Homelessness, a big number, 45% public safety, 35% economy, 10% of the drug crisis, 10% as well. And for the folks at home watching, to weigh in, just go to ketu.com, look for the story on the forum. I'll be asking all of you the same question, so please keep your answers to about a minute, okay? What do you see as the biggest public safety issue in District Two? And what will you do about it as member of the council? And Marnie, let's start with you.
The biggest public safety issue in District Two is making sure that people feel safe on the streets of District Two. We need to reduce the violent, traffic violence and traffic deaths. We need to prevent gun violence, and we need to make people feel safe in their homes.
Mariah?
Yeah, the biggest public safety issue is access and the openness of our public spaces. People need to feel comfortable, whether you're nine or 90. You need to feel like my son, who rides the Tri-Mat bus with his tuba, that you can do that safely. So that's helping people from tents into shelters, and it's cleaning up the physical spaces and having the public safety staff to be able to do that and adequately support.
Samir, you're next.
Yeah, we need to focus on the root causes of crime, because community safety is a society where we all have our needs met. Help when you need it. It's a government that doesn't harm you, or is held accountable if it does. And I think most Portlanders would prefer that a crime doesn't occur, rather than it does occur, even if the person's caught. So focusing on prevention is really important as well. That's why we need to fully fund Portland Street Response and expand it. That's why we need to focus on funding our violence prevention efforts as well, and ensure that we activate spaces so that there isn't space for crime to flourish. And as the only candidate who's worked in the city's public safety system, as the inclusive policy manager for the Public Safety Service area, I'm uniquely qualified to take that challenge on as a member of city council.
Tiffany?
Hi, public safety, we must start with simply by cleaning up unsafe and unsanitary conditions. We also need to ensure that we have well-trained 911, fire, and police. Currently, we only have 97 police officers that cover District Two. That means that's three shifts, so a little over 30 officers per shift for a district that's very large. Also, when you think about people that are houselessness, we need to ensure that they have sobering centers, they have shelters, temporary housing. We have to make sure these people have places to go and that they are safe, as well as the neighboring people around them.
Dan Ryan?
Yeah, definitely with public safety, it's about allowing our families, our elders, to feel like it's safe for them to walk on the sidewalks, to experience their parks. And really, that starts with response times. We need to keep working on response times. When you call 911, would someone please pick up the phone quickly? And then, would someone respond quickly? Whether it's the police, whether it's the street response, whether it's the Rangers, that's our public response system, and we've got to keep working on that efficiency.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I align with what my colleagues have said. I'll add three specific things. I've been a strong supporter of the Portland Street Response. I think we have to expand its efforts and expand its funding. The second thing is actually relevant to one of your interview subjects in advance. I think about those people who are without shelter, and they are most vulnerable to traffic deaths because they have nowhere to go, and because they're often transiting and trying to find food and shelter. And the third thing is public safety. I think of those folks who want to cycle safely. I'm a lifelong cyclist. I want to expand our greenways and our protected cycleways.
Nat West?
Yeah, public safety means a lot of different things to different people. As Jonathan mentioned, cycling is an important aspect of public safety. I'll focus on Portland Street Response. It's about a less than $10 million budget right now compared to Portland Police Bureau, well over $250 million. And if you just think about it on a cost-per-call basis, it's always going to be cheaper to send folks like Portland Street Response to calls, especially when well over 99% of all calls do not result in a use of force. So we shouldn't be sending really expensive solutions to problems which can be solved on a much less tax-intensive basis.
Nabeel?
Number one, we conducted a public safety survey in District Two. Number one, the community are asking for police presence and visibility because it deters crime. Two, they're asking for accountability and public safety equity about check and balances, about abuse of power, racial profiling. And three, the third most important one, they want a collective responsibility. They want to be a part of the safety discussion, because they are where they live, in those neighborhoods 24 hours. But also, there's a broader vision about public safety. How about those large oil tanks stretch along the Willamette River? If there's a burst or a spill, that's a catastrophe. We need to push for a strong regulation and measures about storage and transportation. There's also in District Two hate crimes about anti-immigrant, anti-Latino, anti-Spanish, and other communities. Thank you.
Next question now. Would you support funding to hire more Portland police officers? Yes or no? Tell me why or why not. Again, you have a minute if you'd like to take that as well. And Mariah, let's begin with you on this one.
I absolutely do support having more officers. I mean, first, we need to realize that we are not, especially here in North Precinct, even fully staffed to the level that is funded currently. But I do support that, because we need to bring down response times, which for, you know, urgent crimes or urgent calls can be 21 minutes. That's too long. And I also support as a piece of that, you know, funding Portland Street Response for a 24/7 response and being able to transport people. That would be in addition to staffing our officers, because we need to have officers there for our community members. I'm the former chair of the Northeast Coalition of Neighborhoods, and know that that's what our community needs, is those relationships. I've also worked with the Albina Killingsworth Safe Neighborhoods Coalition, and I've seen what it means to have police officers that people know on the streets, that work with our ministers, our schools, and our neighbors to be there. Having those relationships and having that community staffing takes the staff time to do it.
Samir, more police officers?
Yeah, there are several vacancies right now, about 80 vacancies, and I support filling those at the Portland Police. They're already fully funded. In terms of new funding, we have a lot more pressing issues within the public safety space, from hiring more 911 dispatchers, improving ambulance response times, and protecting and expanding Portland Street Response. You know, we have a lot of situations, from presidential visits to active shooters where police are the best responders. We need to focus on ensuring that they're able to respond to the things that they're trained and already resourced for. But for other responders, we need to, or other situations, we need to make sure that other responders that are better suited, are trained and fully resourced to do it, and to ensure that we're able to send the right person to the right call.
Tiffany?
Yes, so when I think about public safety, and as a person that's worked over 20 years at the city, passing policy, and in our community, supporting our community, I'm experienced enough to know, yes, there are systemic issues around policing that need to be addressed, but we also need safe public safety, 911, police, and fire. In 2005, I believe, we had 1,000 FTEs. Now, we are the 26th largest city, and we have around 881. We are not equipped to handle the population and respond to them in a timely and safe way. And part of livability, part of people wanting to come and live in our beautiful city, we have to ensure that they are safe. We have to ensure there's good response times, 911, fire, police. We also need to make sure that our police officers are well-trained and accountable and accessible.
When you mentioned FTEs, full-time employees, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Dan Ryan, your thoughts on this?
Yes, and in fact, it was about four years ago, I was the deciding vote to stop the defunding of the police. And since then, we have done our best to level it up to the rates that we should be at for the population of our size. I attend all of the swearing-in ceremonies. And what I'm seeing is a culture change. I'm seeing a different type of person showing up to be a police officer with degrees in sociology and such, and I'm enthusiastic about where it's going. Chief Day always talks about it being community police. And so people want relationships with their police officers, again, just like many of us had when we were children. And so getting them out of the cars, connecting with the community, we can do this.
Let's go next to Jonathan.
You know, I think the question of more police or less police begs the question of what we want our police force to look like and what public safety means in this city. So there's not a number that I would say more or less. I would focus on, again, some of the responses that we said before. I think, first of all, we should look at expanding and funding much more robustly the Portland Street Response. Number two, when I think about public safety, having been around so-called crime waves in the past, and actually, our violent crime statistics are down also nationally. That doesn't mean that certain communities are not affected. We have to look at why people feel that anxiety. And I go back, I actually connect public safety to the question of inequality. I think as long as we have inequality in this city, people feel insecure, and we have to work. And I would like to invest our money, our limited resources, on actually employment and jobs for people, which I think is an aspect of public safety.
Nat West?
Hey, your question was, should we increase the police budget to hire more officers? And I think Samir summarized it really well. There are open positions that are already budgeted for that are not filled. So we should look at how are we filling those? Are we filling them with the right set of people? As Commissioner Ryan mentioned, you, the Portland Police Bureau has its largest budget in its current cycle and it's ever had, and yet, we still have the lowest number of officers. So clearly, money isn't necessarily going to get us more officers. As a small business owner for 12 years, when I interact with the police, it's on low acuity issues, like a broken window when I know no one's left in the building because I got there before the police. I don't need an operationally expensive armed officer to show up. I think I need a public safety support specialist, somebody to give me a case number so that I can file for insurance claim. Oftentimes, we're sending very expensive officers, operationally expensive officers, to do things that much cheaper people could help increase public safety in the community.
Nabeel?
Yes, we do. We are, we have one of the lowest police officer-to-resident ratio, about one for every 827 residents compared to other cities like Denver, 1 to 4275. I think the issue, the challenge, is one, as you have mentioned, is filling the vacancy. Why aren't we able to even hire or retain police officers? And then, we have to get innovative and creative about hiring more police officers to basically provide safety and protection. We want the police to swiftly respond and effectively to riots, for example, to safeguard our neighborhood, to build trust with the community. But we need to have a system and oversight of accountability. It's about check and balances. That's how we move forward, but we also need to promote the idea with the police working together with the community and including marginalized communities. And I'll stop there, because my time is up.
Was she wrapping you up over here? Is that what Sammy was doing over there? Good job, Sammy, you're doing your job. And circle back around to Marnie, give me your thoughts on this, supporting funding for police officers.
Thank you. Well, I believe every Portlander needs to feel safe and be safe. And we have a lot of room to improve in the city of Portland. I'm familiar with safety because I'm a black belt martial artist and teach self-defense to children and adults. And so I have worked with survivors of violence and know that this gets very personal and affects everyone's lives. So I believe in community policing. We need to spend more time having officers getting to know people in the neighborhood. We need police accountability. As you know, vote 82% of Portland voters supported a citizens oversight commission of the police. We need to make sure that that happens, so people have more trust in our public safety officers. I also support Portland Street Response expansion. We need to send the right people to the right jobs. And so with Portland Street Response addressing certain needs, it frees up officers to deal with more very serious crimes.
I'm feeling a lot more secure in the studio now, knowing we have a black belt in the studio. Thank you for that one. We're going to move on to the next question. We sent a news crew to District Two to find out what Portlanders want you to address. Let's listen to this gentleman here.
Housing prices has gone up so far that your average citizen that was born and raised here can hardly afford to live here. So like, that might be a good issue to tackle.
He says it's difficult for people who've lived in the District Two all their lives to buy a home. How do you respond to that concern? And Samir, let's begin with you on this one.
Yeah, thanks. I was born in this district, so I've grown up here. I spent a lot of time as a kid coming to this area, to Alberta, to Williams, to Mississippi, and I now rent in the Portsmouth neighborhood. I've been a renter my whole adult life, and there is a massive affordability crisis. I'm a day-one signer of the Renters' Bill of Rights, which will help ensure that the rent stays low. We also need to support the housing production strategy to ensure that there's support for folks who are on a fixed income, whether they have, they're elderly, or they're on disability, to build more homes in the market rate affordable subsidized and social housing sectors to ensure that we're able to meet the needs of the future, as well as the unmet needs we have now. And together, that's going to be able to ensure that rent doesn't go up. I also think that there's a lot we can do, especially with our infrastructure projects in the district, to support better-paying jobs that can help people on the other side of the affordability crisis by ensuring that they have the money in their pocket to pay the rent.
Tiffany?
So I am born and raised and rooted in north and northeast Portland. I feel very fortunate to live in the house that I grew up in, and I have seen the price of housing just skyrocket. Again, I will go back to, we need all levels of housing, temporary housing, we need shelters, and we need affordable housing, and we also need low-income housing. And there's a difference there. As elected to Portland Community College, we opened the 42nd Avenue Opportunity Center that has 84 units of affordable housing and daycare. We need more projects like that, that bring wraparound services and things that people need to be successful all in one space. Also, with PCC, we need to really focus on skilled labor, right? Because it was skilled labor that created the middle class. So making sure that there's access to opportunities for education and career pathways, so people can afford to be here. So when I think about that, we all have to work as a collective to make sure that there's opportunities for folks to really live, work, and play in the same area.
Dan Ryan, affordable housing?
Yeah, I also have deep roots in District Two. Want to put that out there. Over several decades, my dad ran a small business in St. John's for over 30 years. And when I went to Roosevelt High School in the late '70s, a lot of people owned their homes with working class jobs, and that's just not the case. The national indicators with interest rates and such have made this a very difficult issue of late. However, prior to that, our city had a hard time making it easy for people to build. So we've had a supply problem. So when I got the assignment back in 2020, I actually brought all eight bureaus together to finally look at this permitting issue, and we also brought in some continuous improvement experts. I put into the budget four of them. If you look at a relay race, I did three laps, and I passed the baton to Commissioner Rubio, and she took it to the finish line, and I supported her. So we had to take care of that red tape, and we must continue to focus on that. The fact is, no one wants to invest in Portland right now as much as they used to because of the earlier conversation about public safety and livability. All of these dots connect. So let's go, let's get more supply, and let's make our conditions better. See you.
So I would cite three things, and I'll start by saying I believe housing should be a universal right in the same way that Medicare and Social Security are a universal right. Nobody should be without shelter in the richest nation in human history. Second, I've been a renter my entire life. There are three people on this stage, Marnie, Samir, myself, who have signed the Renters' Bill of Rights that would protect renters, tens of thousands of people, from abusive landlords. I, and I believe other city council members who would be elected who have signed that, would drive to support that and make sure that those are inscribed in law. And the last thing I'll say is that we need to raise the minimum wage. The metro minimum wage in this city is $15.95. In order to rent a two-bedroom home, a two-bedroom place, and this is a statistic by the National Low-Income Housing Coalition, the minimum wage has to be $32 an hour. I am the only candidate in this race who is specifically advocating for raising the minimum wage at $25 an hour. That would have to be done statewide, and that would make it more affordable, so people can actually afford the rent.
Nat?
Yeah, there's a lot of reasons why housing affordability is a challenge for almost all Portlanders. And Commissioner Ryan mentioned the new combined permitting bureau. As I owned Reverend Nat's Hard Cider for 12 years, and three of those years, I was stuck in permit hell, negotiating a disagreement between Portland Water Bureau and Bureau of Environmental Services. One of them wanted my sewer to be this way, and the other one wanted my sewer to be that way. And I had to negotiate an agreement between them. I had to get the city ombudsman involved. So when Commissioner Ryan says that it's very challenging to build housing in this city, he's completely right. This is a question of supply and demand, both affordable housing and market rate housing. So I'll spend a lot of time when I'm elected focusing on ensuring that our permitting bureau is operating just as smoothly as possible, and it's a desirable place for people to build homes.
Nabeel, your thoughts on this?
I want to thank the viewer and community member for asking the question, because that's one of the most challenging deficits that the state of Portland is facing. It's affordable housing. I've been working in public service for 30 years here in District Two. I hear that parent who said, "I make $21 an hour. I have a household size of six people. I can't afford to live in Portland anymore." We need to help that developer with incentives to create housing. We are about short 17,000 to 20,000 deficit. This is to accommodate our current population, let alone the population to come. So we need, I have, I have run for decades, a housing stability program that has delivered excellent return on investment, up to 80% on home retention and homelessness reductions. There are programs that are working, so we need to have tax and rebate and incentives. We have to work with the community. We need to work with business leaders to address this altogether, multiple jurisdiction, not only the city, but the county, the metro, and others. I see again that my time is up, and I'm going to stop.
She's on to you now.
She's doing what she's supposed to be doing.
Let me tell you, let's circle back to Marnie again. The question is yours.
Thank you. My vision is the central east side needs four stories and corner stores. We need to have our east side neighborhoods and north Portland neighborhoods look more like Slab Town, the Pearl District, the Alphabet District, and Northwest. So I want to start with the vision of more housing and more access to mass transit. So housing affordability is tied to this because we need to increase the quantity of housing we're building more quickly. Number two, we need to do that without sacrificing any environmental protections. We need to make sure that we do raise the minimum wage and have a strong education system so that people are ready to get good jobs and trained. And I support community colleges, our public school system, and our universities in Portland.
Mariah, it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. The Portland we love is safe, and it's affordable, and it's sustainable. It's a place where a solo parent like me can make it work. That was true when I moved back here with my family, when the median home price was under $300,000. It's now over $550,000. It's less true today, and we really, our top issue here in District Two is housing availability and affordability. More housing means more affordable housing, and we have huge opportunities I want to seize on in District Two, the Lloyd District, the space next to Legacy, and Albina Vision. Those are all coming online, and we will need strong leaders who will continue through with permitting reform, who will work on infill strategies. I'm not sure that we need to turn all our single-family neighborhoods into high-rises like Slab Town, but I want to see that infill. And in fact, I personally would do that on my property. I had a tree that smashed my garage, and it would be a perfect opportunity to put an ADU and create a long-term, sustainable renter situation there. But unfortunately, I've been tied with the city and permitting so long that we're just going to do a repair on it. We need to make it easier for people to build and to use what they have to stay in place. Thank you.
Going to shift gears just a tad bit. Do you support changing the region's homeless services tax to redirect some of that money to housing development? So I'll read that again. Do you support changing the region's homeless services tax to redirect some of that money to housing development? We're going to begin with Tiffany on this one.
I would have to give that a little bit more thought, but I'm just going to be honest. Until I see us addressing and meeting the needs of the most vulnerable people out there on the streets, making sure they have the resources, the infrastructures, the shelter, the temporary housing, permanent housing, I want that solved first. It is inhumane to have people living on the streets. So until I see some movement in that, in solving, and taking care of our people, I want to make sure that we have enough resources to do that.
Dan Ryan, your turn.
Yeah, in the spring of 2020, voters passed the Here Together, which was to provide shelter for those living on our streets. And we failed the voters. In fact, most of the focus from the county has been on services and then housing. And so it took some ARPA money, that was code for federal money during the COVID, for Commissioner Ryan, who had the dotted line to the county on homelessness, to say, "Why don't we try something different? What if we met people a little bit more where they are? Let's build some villages with services." Of course, Congress shelters without services don't do much good. In fact, maybe 4% get into stable housing within three to six months, whereas in the villages where they've been up and running now for about two years, they're in at 48%. That's a big differential. So let's look at practices, let's look at the data and see what works, and fund that. And also, what happened in north Portland, when we opened the Peninsula Crossing Village, what we saw is the area around there, after a little hiccup, which your station covered very well, within a month or two, things were much better. And in fact, the Peninsula Crossing Trail from Willamette to Columbia, which was unusable for over 13 years, now is enjoyed by families all the time, every weekend.
Jonathan, it's your turn.
I agree with Tiffany, and I think counterposing those is not the way to think about this challenge. And in fact, we have to be frankly more creative. There was just recently a bill introduced in Congress by Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and Senator Tina Smith from Minnesota, which is setting up a $10 billion Homes Project.
and Senator Tina Smith from Minnesota, which is setting up a $10 billion Homes project. And I think those kinds of projects that we can tap into, that we can be creative, whether it be still some of the rescue money, that bill to actually develop housing, it's unnecessarily, it's unnecessary to sacrifice the money that we really have to continue to invest in those folks that don't have shelter.
Nat West?
Yes, the question is, should we move money from supportive housing services into affordable housing? Devils in the details for that. We want to make sure we're not strangling opportunities for supportive housing services just to build more housing. I'm a shelter-first person. I think I was a Trimet bus driver for eight months recently, and I saw firsthand, there's a lot of different kinds of homelessness. There are people whose first step would be moving into a designated camping site. There'd be people whose next step would be moving into permanent housing that has few supports, if any. So we really need to be looking at solutions for everyone, as Commissioner Ryan mentions, the tiny villages are a fantastic success model, and it really took some out-of-the-box thinking to make that happen. I think we should be doing more of that in the city.
Nabeel, I want to hear your thoughts on this.
I would say no. I think the current formula is not working, and I don't know why we continue to pour money on things that are not working. We're talking about affordable housing. We don't have a clear metrics about how many percentage of we want to reduce in terms of unsheltered population. I rather, if we have to move diverting that money, I would rather divert it to rehabilitation and treatment. I have been running and leading the direct provision of malhealth, drug and alcohol, and counseling services, and harm reduction measure. We're not investing enough in that. I think you really need to have a balance between malhealth and between housing. And we have continued to pour a lot of money in housing without a performance metrics, without clear metrics what we want to do with that. And I think there is an opportunity to do better, to have people sit at the table and look at all the needs that Portland needs and balance that. And I'll stop there before.
He beat you to the punch there, Sammy.
She's scaring people.
She is, a little frightening. Let's go back to Marnie in the start here. Go ahead, Marnie.
Thank you. I'm not ready to support a change in the tax because we have some programs that are working, and we have this opportunity with this new government to elect 12 people to bring new perspective to how we can hold ourselves accountable for delivering for voters. I talk with people, and they say, we need, people need more help, the city is failing. And so we have opportunities to do better. We have nonprofits that are delivering great services, like Street Books, Ground Score Association, and so we have effective measures. And this is the opportunity for the voters to elect people who know how to govern it, who know how to solve problems, and hold our agencies accountable. I know that the city did an audit of the programs, the county auditor did an audit, and we need to fix the problems that have been already identified.
Mariah Hudson, your thoughts on this?
Yeah, Steve, I do support a revision to the measure. We've seen the county has a lot of money, a lot of money that they haven't been able to spend effectively. And I think being able to both extend that measure and direct some of that money into long-term solutions. I mean, what we're seeing, I'm former chair of the Northeast Coalition Neighborhoods. I helped stand up a shelter and make that successful with businesses, with neighbors, with the city and the county. It's successful still today. Is that we are lacking for the pieces that get people from shelter all the way through the continuum, and housing is a piece of that. It's connecting those pieces as well. At OHSU during the pandemic, I helped organize that response, working across agencies. And we need that kind of operationalizing in our system, and housing is going to be a piece of that. So I do support the revision, absolutely. Thank you.
Samir?
Yeah, I think we've heard a lot of really good ideas around having more metrics and more performance measures. I also agree with Jonathan as well about the focus here being, you know, on finding other dollars and being more creative. When it comes to changing ballot measure, I am generally an absolutist about not changing what the voters have approved for at least a few years and watching and learning from it. We've seen efforts at the county level, at the metro level, and many times at the city level to undermine what voters have approved. And I don't support that. I'm a person who's project managed the Police Accountability Commission, which is based on what Marnie was talking about, the ballot measure 26217, and we've seen it undermined over and over and over again by elected officials. We need to start listening to the people, especially when they vote on ballot measures that are, should be binding on elected leaders.
Speaking of listening to the people, we have another one here. We have a question for you regarding one of Portland's most talked-about issues. We touched on it just briefly, homelessness. Here's what Portlanders in District 2 want to know. Let's play that.
What is your plan for the homelessness? Where are you going to put them?
I would definitely want to know what they're gonna, what their plans are for addressing the homeless crisis and the addiction crisis in Portland.
Big issue, obviously, all over this city right now. Let's talk about that. Bottom line, they want to know the plan for addressing homelessness and addiction in Portland. And Dan Ryan, we begin with you on this one.
Yeah, my motivation to run in 2020 was because I lost my brother Tim on the streets. He definitely had all the skill sets to have a productive life, but he had mental health issues. He stopped taking the proper medication, if you will, and treatment, and then started recreating. Eventually, he was homeless on the streets, and heroin was his drug of choice. I have been really honest about this, that some people aren't housetable in that condition. They need, basically, they need withdrawal with medical support. After that withdrawal, then you can ask them the questions about treatment. You're not from here, maybe you're from Omaha. Would you like transportation home to Omaha where you could set up treatment? If you have felonies that are outstanding, then you could go to jail. The thought of just going back on the street, harming themselves and others, is not an option Portlanders want. When Portland voters passed that in the spring of 2020, they expected us to act with urgency about getting people off the streets into services. And so sometimes what happens in the bureaucracy or the activists that brought us these measures, then they turn that around and say, oh, no, now it's all about housing. And so we have to be careful when we say that X percent voted for something, the campaign got them to vote for something, but the people that brought that to us might have had a different plan. So we manipulate the voters. So sometimes elected officials have to be brave enough to stand up to the Housing First Coalition and tell them we need to rethink this. And that's what I've done my entire time in office.
Jonathan?
So I think everybody on this panel and everybody running understands the trauma of addiction and mental illness, and that's certainly a factor in homelessness. But the vast majority of homelessness is caused by economic issues, the inability of people to pay the rent in this city. And this is why I just want to recount what I said earlier in some other questions. Number one, we have to support the Renters' Bill of Rights so that people are not forced out of their home. Number two, if we aren't raising people's wages, people are not going to be able to afford the rent. And so I am advocating a large increase in the minimum wage so people can actually afford the rent. And the third thing I'll say is I believe in actually investing in social housing. We talk about affordable housing. That's not often affordable housing that stays affordable long term. I believe we should build beautiful, incredible housing complexes in the same way that my former city in New York has beautiful places called Co-op City, Penn South. It was built to get rid of tenements. It was built with union pension money. Because I'm supported by more unions in this campaign than anybody, I'm trying to bring some of that pension money to bear in this city to build beautiful social housing.
Nat West?
Yeah, so oftentimes you look at homelessness and addiction as what's visible as opposed to what's actually happening in our communities. I mentioned before that I was a Trimet bus driver, and my last week of service, I had a fentanyl smoker on my bus, the big green FX2, if anyone's ridden that one. And that was really, really frustrating to have that happen. I think what someone chooses to, that was kind of the point of Measure 110, was to not criminalize consumption, but it ended up not getting, we didn't get what we were sold. There's a big difference between what we want to have happen in our city and what we are comfortable seeing happen in our city. And I think that we need to make, we need to take examples from folks like Washington County that effectively eliminated homelessness by creating shelters of all types. I don't like sweeps unless there's someplace for them to go, because all you're doing is just pushing a problem from your backyard into someone else's backyard. So for me, it really is all about creating shelters of all kinds as fast as possible. And that's something that we need to get out of our lane. Maybe you could say that it's Multnomah County's job, but we should make it our job.
Homelessness and addiction, Nabeel. Question is yours.
Yes. I currently direct and manage a housing stability and homeless program that has delivered up to 80% in home retention and reducing homelessness. I also manage and direct a program with malhealth, drug and alcohol, and counseling service. Let me tell you about homelessness. One, we need to enforce the city ordinance about homelessness because it's not targeting the homeless community because they are our most vulnerable community members. It's about order, it's about cleanliness, it's about hygiene, it's about the well-being of the entire community, and about drug and alcohol and addiction services. We have proven methods that save lives. We need to invest, one, in harm reduction measures. Expand, for example, access to naloxone, who saves really, we're talking about human beings. It saves lives. About overdose prevention centers. Also, we need to invest in rehabilitation and in treatment plans because these proven methods work. Combining the transitional housing and the malhealth services, they work. I could show you the result over again and again. And we need to invest in these programs that have good return on taxpayers' dollars, good return on investment, good return on expenditure. And there are a lot of things when it comes to homelessness. The city, there are a lot of current buildings that are vacant, that if the city buys it, it's a good investment, it's better. We start, we need to start building public housing. But when you buy these houses that cost about $350,000 a unit, if you wait three or five years, that's going to cost over $500,000. It's smart to buy them now and in combination with building public. I lived in Europe where there's--
We gotta wrap you, I'm sorry. Sammy, I knew, I could feel her over my shoulder here doing the thing, but--
I didn't see that one.
We gotta move on to Marnie. The question is yours.
Great, thank you very much. First of all, I support the city's continued cooperation with the Joint Office on Homeless Services. I think that with the new city council, we can work more effectively and directly and collaboratively with all of the county commissioners. Second of all, we need more services, obviously, deflection centers, sobering centers, culturally appropriate addiction care. And I think we can't do it alone. And that's why we need to elect people this time who can work collaboratively. Now, shelter for our unhoused folks. It is heartbreaking for all of us to see the suffering on our streets. And I know all of us want better for these humans. And so first of all, we need more shelters, more day shelters and nighttime shelters. During the ice storm, a friend of mine called and said, I don't know what to do. There is a family on the street with children, and they called 311, and there was no answer, and they are freezing and in danger. And so I went on the website, and I tried to find a shelter for them with my internet and my warm home, and I couldn't do it. So we have lots of room to improve just connecting people to shelters. And finally, I, if I'm elected, I want to focus on deeply affordable housing with wraparound services for people who make less than $40,000 a year.
Homelessness and addiction, Mariah?
Yeah, so I work in healthcare, and no one should leave our ER or jail and go right back to the streets, especially with their addiction unaddressed. I've also helped neighbors set up a shelter that is still successful in Northeast Portland. So I've seen those needs firsthand on a couple of fronts. And what I can say is the half a billion dollars that we've spent on homeless services over the past few years hasn't been well-used. We still have a system that doesn't adequately track shelter beds to know where to place someone, so there is unused capacity at some shelters. I actually support if we don't see significant progress and achievable goals with the Joint Office of Homeless Services withdrawing from that agreement and the city investing just like we used to a few years ago in a sobering center, because that is one of the missing pieces. But we really need to look at this. It is about expanding task sites. It is about long-term, 0% to 30% of average income, you know, supporting that kind of housing. But I think our most urgent needs are around a sobering center and around places for people to go and be safe and, you know, have hygienic facilities and be in touch with the people. I'm also a trauma-informed trainer, so I know that having that kind of touch point helps people come from a no-barrier shelter to something long term.
Samir, your turn.
Yeah, one of the things that we've seen across a lot of issue areas is that the city's current policies waste a lot of time for people, not for the city, but for average regular people. So we talked about that with the permitting earlier, but also about shelter placements. Right now, you have to call through each shelter individually, ask about the restrictions, ask about how many beds are available. The city should be providing a dashboard for that. It's a very easy thing to do, it's very small by city budget standards. In terms of protecting folks from becoming houseless, the Renters' Bill of Rights is the first thing, so that we're not evicting people during ice storms. We're not, any extreme weather event would be a temporary prevention on eviction. We do need to place people in shelters. Commissioner Ryan talked about the temporary alternative shelter sites. What the data shows is that the outreach programs affiliated with those programs have drastically increased the placement of shelter in the last couple of years without any new money going to that team. And that's more cost-effective than sweeps. That's more cost-effective than the most expensive place to house somebody and put them, you know, is a jail. And so we need to be looking at what's good for taxpayers as well as what's good for the folks that are experiencing this, because we don't have to sacrifice our values to solve our problems.
Tiffany, we're going to end this question with you.
Yeah, and when we think about, I think it's really important for us to have sobering centers in each quadrant. You cannot even talk to people about the next step if they have no place where they can detox and get themselves their mind right to even be able to receive what you're saying to them. When we talk about the importance, we have to have all levels of housing, shelters, temporary, affordable, low income. One of my focuses that I see, though, we are not talking about the working families that are rent burden. We're not talking about the people that are on fixed income, and it's cheaper for us to find ways to keep them in their house so they don't end up on the streets. Because once you get out on the streets, all of the things, lifing starts happening, right? And so I'm really focused on that piece of the conversation as well. Also, at nine years old, I used to take the bus from my house to Catlin Gable, and I was free, I was comfortable. It is inhumane, and it's an unsafe feeling to have people just living on the streets. We have to make sure that we help people. That story about that woman having a baby in one of the encampments the other day, that's heartbreaking. That should never be happening in our city, let alone our country.
Next topic, when our crew was out and about in Portland, we heard about this subject more than once. You'll be familiar when you hear it too. Go ahead, let's play that.
Well, every time I'm in my car, I think about how bad the roads are everywhere, and I would hope that that would be what they would address.
May not rank at the top for a lot of folks, but it's amazing how many people complain about the potholes in the roads in Portland. Portlanders want an end to the bumpy roads and the potholes. Where would this be on your list of priorities? And Jonathan, let's begin with you.
So I would look at it as a second, third ranking priority if I think about also people on the streets and the affordability. It's important when people drive, they should feel safe when they're driving. And so two things I would say. One is that I think that our challenge as city councillors will be to direct our lobbying team to engage the state legislature, because next year, they're going to be debating the long-term transportation budget, which will affect us directly, and that will directly affect the kind of money we can bring in to deal with the potholes and the roads. But I would look at it also in a broader sense, that we want to try to move the city to a place where people have other alternatives, especially cycling, and reduce the need to travel in your car. One small idea that I've been promoting, and this is again somewhat of a secondary issue, is the idea of having a four-day work week for the same pay, which would actually reduce commuting and would have actually great climate change effects. So if you're only commuting, let's say, four days a week, then you don't have to deal with the horrible potholes and the driving and the stress of that. But certainly, again, number one, making sure that we have the funding from the state in the big transportation budget that's likely to be passed next year.
Nat West, potholes, the issue.
Yeah, as a former Trimet bus driver and daily bike commuter, I have pretty intimate experiences with roads of all kinds. I was actually hit on my bike last month in Central East Side of Portland. There was not enough bicycle infrastructure-- But oftentimes, infrastructure is pitted against maintenance. PBOB currently has a $4 billion backlog on maintenance, and that's really because it's not politically sexy to fix potholes and to make streets safer. It looks better for our reelections if we have new roads and new bridges and new shiny things. One thing that I'll really focus on is what's called daylighting intersections. There's a state law that requires that you have to park far away from every corner. We don't enforce that in the city of Portland. I'm not suggesting we should go around and ticket everyone, but we should be painting those corners so that people don't park there and alerting them. That's a public safety thing, so when you're walking on a sidewalk, a car driver nearby can see you approach and will ultimately reduce traffic deaths.
Nabeel, where would potholes, bumpy roads be on your priority list?
It's one of the top. It's amongst, it's a part of the infrastructure. You know, how many times any one of us had hit that pothole that you feel like you're grinding your teeth? I have a lady who works in my neighborhood, actually lives in my neighborhood in District 2. She is legally blind. She was crossing a pedestrian, and she fell in a pothole. People run, rush to help her. And she goes, "Nabeel, pothole is not only for automobiles, bicycles, and-- A parent, a mom holding an infant, would walk, wouldn't even see that pothole, let alone there is no lighting." So we need to fix those. We made so huge decision in the past that deferred our maintenance of our core infrastructure that's in a state, in this repair currently. So we need to invest in those. Those are what's going to advance and improve the quality of life here in the city of Portland. So that's a priority.
Marty Glickman. Your thoughts on the potholes, the bumpy roads out there on your priority list?
Well, potholes are part of public safety. So I've served in elected office before. I was a school board member for four years, and I know we have a limited budget. And so my priority would be to fill the potholes that have the greatest risk of harming someone first, because we need to prioritize all of this deferred maintenance, hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance.
Mariah, you are next.
Yeah, well, potholes and public safety are basic services that Portlanders expect for our tax dollars that we're spending on and that we're delivering. I chair the Portland Bureau of Transportation's Budget Committee, and I will say one of, it is a large budget. It's nearly half a billion dollars. A lot of that funding is pretty locked into what it can be used for. But I have brought that committee around maintenance, because that is a key need here in the city, whether it's bridges, whether it's roads. And it's much more expensive to deal with that maintenance later. I know this personally as a mom with little kids who biked to school, how hard it is when you hit something like that. So it's not a small concern. The delivery of our basic services should be a top priority for all of our city council members, because we need to deliver on the promise and really on the value proposition of living here in Portland. That's what not only attracts people to live here, but also businesses.
Samir?
Yeah, I've said it in a lot of my messaging already. I'm a sworn enemy of potholes. Safe routes to school is number one on my community safety program, and resolving the maintenance backlog is the first thing on my infrastructure platform. We've got money to make signs to say, "Call 1-800-BUMP" or something to fix a pothole. We've got money to fix the potholes. And not just that, but I agree with Nat, the maintenance issues broadly are huge. We have, potholes are one thing, and I've lost four people I know to traffic violence myself since high school till three years ago. But also, we have to fix our swimming pools. We have to fix our public restrooms. We have to get our streetlights to be turned on. We can make infrastructure sexy again, and I think what I commit to all of you is that you will never see me with a big pair of golden scissors in my hands, because we need to fix the things we've already got before we start building new things.
Tiffany?
Agreed. So potholes are a symptom of a much larger problem, which is the lack of maintenance. And again, being born and raised here and rooted, I know what this city looked like. We were delivering on the basic services, and that is what we're failing to do. Also, when I think about, because I have worked at the city so long, and I have past policy, and I deal with the Budget Office and all of the things, I think about where were we getting that money for maintenance before? And let's find out where we were getting that money for street maintenance before and saying, hey, well, maybe we need to be using that money. And so I think of like the gaps, like why did it stop happening, right? Because I grew up where that was, this city was great about that, the street cleaners. They used to put the sign on the car, "The street cleaners are coming." I mean, I just grew up where everything was really pristine. And so my thing goes to my head, what did we do with that money? Did we reallocate it to do what? Our job is to deliver on the basic services, and I am for a strong multimodal transportation. Potholes impact bikers, walkers, cars, everyone.
Road maintenance is the issue. Dan Ryan?
Yeah, you know, first of all, if you're running for a local office, you're going to have a pothole conversation, no matter what decade you're running in. And so here we are, and we do need to stop pitting cars against bikes on this one and other modes of transportation. There was a really fascinating study that PBOB did, and they asked people what we should focus on. And the majority of the people out there, the people who vote, said maintenance. The majority of the people on the commissions in the Portland Bureau of Transportation said planning. And so recently, I was with some of you in a meeting, and I said, "We need more doers in PBOB and less planners." And so we need people to actually be on the ground fixing the surfaces so they're actually safe. Like, let's get basic here and stop overthinking it. And so I just want to remind us that when we pass these bills and people say yes to the transportation levy, they think that they're also supporting routine maintenance. So as a group, when we're elected, we need to focus on more discipline and delivering on those promises that we put on the ballot.
Moving on to the next question. Univision, the Spanish-language network is located right in K2's newsroom, right down the hallway. Here's a question from one of my Univision colleagues. Listen to this.
Hello, I'm Guillermo Mota here with Univision Portland. How do you plan on including the Spanish-speaking residents in your projects and ideas so that they feel included?
I want to read that again. "How do you plan on including the Spanish-speaking residents in your projects and ideas so that they do feel included?" I'm going to give you about 30 seconds each for this one, if you can. Nat, let's begin with you on this one.
Sure. There's a pretty common saying in local government of having an open-door policy or reaching out for the community for feedback, but that really just gets people who want to engage with you, not those people who have opinions but are working too hard or otherwise not available during 9 to 5. So I look forward to spending as little time as possible in City Hall and spending more time in the community, including Spanish-speaking community.
Nabeel?
I have worked for 30 years in the Cuyahoga neighborhood with the Latinx community, for 30 years in District 2. I have, I just, last night, I had an advisory board of the Latino community. I built that in 2012, an advisory board that include the voices of the Latinx community, because we can't advance our services without talking and including. It's about inclusion. It's about equity. We always, as the service providers, we know how to do things. It's not. We need to include the people and the Spanish-speaking. And by the way, I speak fluently, write and read it and speak it Spanish.
Marty, it is your turn.
That's a really important question. Thank you. First of all, I commit to hiring people who are bilingual to work with me. I am not bilingual in Spanish, but I have, my campaign manager is, and I would continue to do that in City Hall. Number two, I'm more than open-door. I extend my phone number to everyone to call me or a Spanish speaker on my staff. I publish my phone number in the voter's guide even, because I want to be a city council member that is very open all the time for conversations.
Mariah, it is your turn.
Well, Steve, real engagement begins with the neighborhood level, and I think that's where Portland's recovery comes as well. So it's going to be reinvesting in our neighborhood coalitions, in a real grassroots engagement that includes our Spanish-speaking communities. I work at Oregon's largest hospital, and I can tell you, we don't just have Spanish speakers, but we have dozens of languages that we have to provide care and help people through in those languages. So having that available at the city as well and engaging our neighborhoods and those communities is going to be critical to getting real engagement.
Samir, 30 seconds.
Yeah, this is a really important thing, because we need to reach the folks who've been historically underserved, and that includes Spanish speakers. I would scale up what I've already done at the city. As the project manager for the Police Accountability Commission, every meeting had Spanish language interpretation. We did multiple town halls specifically focused on the Latino community, including a town hall out in Alberta, which was conducted primarily in Spanish. And so we need to make sure that, you know, you have a right to a government that reflects you and that listens to you and incorporates your voice into policymaking, regardless of your language, regardless of your historical exclusion, regardless of immigration status and everything else. And so, you know, it's a commitment that I make to being accessible and making sure that government is more accessible and listens to people, including, of course, Latino poor owners.
Tiffany, it's your turn.
So in my many years of experience working with minority women, emerging small businesses to help grow their businesses and creating policy around how we engage with our nonprofit organizations, the cities, we have partnerships with Latino Network, Latino Build, and an array of other hosts. And so it's about going to them and making sure that they have access to information. It also is about when we translate our materials, we need to do more translations of more of our materials. But really, it's about being in community, because that's how you build trust, and that's how you ensure that they want to interact with you. So there's always room to expand on that and build upon it. We also have staff at the city that do speak other languages, and they get a pay differential for that, so.
Dan Ryan?
Yeah, it starts at home with me. My spouse is Mexican descent, so they are speaking daily with students out of David Douglas and with their mom, of course. And so that's one. And then two, it's really about workforce for me. When you look at our contracts, COVID contracts for minority contracts, that's one thing, but looking at the total workforce, we're doing some big projects like Bull Run. We have an opportunity to see many Latinos hired on those jobs. They can go from pre-apprentice all the way to journey by the end of that big project. And so we need to look at workforce, because that's our emerging economy, our new arrivals. Let's make sure they don't leave Portland.
Jonathan, we end with you.
Yes, thank you, Steve, and thank you to K2. I am a product of and a very proud union member of 40 years. I am supported by more unions in this district by far than any other candidate and in the city. If you look at the composition of those thousands of workers who are supporting me in my campaign, they are oftentimes Spanish speakers. If you look at the janitorial services, security services, they are part of my, if you will, my inner cabinet. Those are the folks I've talked to for years. Those are the folks in those unions and the working people who will be part of my circle of the people I think about in every single policy that I work on in the city.
You just heard from eight candidates in District 2. There are other candidates running for a city council seat in that district. Their individual interviews will be posted on katu.com starting the first week in October. We'll also be posting interviews with other Portland city council and mayoral candidates on k2.com as well. Almost 100 interviews will be posted on our website. K2 is on your side, helping you make an informed decision on who will represent you. And next Monday at 11:00 a.m., K2 News is partnering with Willamette University to hold a forum with candidates from District 3. That includes more of southeast Portland to I-205. It'll air at 11 o'clock, katu.com and YouTube. That's it for the District 2 Forum. Our thanks to the candidates, our sponsor, Willamette University, and all of you for watching. I told you guys it'd be painless, right? Thanks for hanging with us today.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you to our timekeeper as well.
There you go.
The previous special program was sponsored by Willamette University.